I'll call the meeting of the Fayette County Commissioners to order. Please rise for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome everyone here today. I'd like to ask everyone to please silence their phones if they haven't already. We'll begin this afternoon with approval of the minutes.
I'm going to approve Mr. Westman's second.
Motion made and seconded that we approve the minutes as presented. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes. I believe, due to the crowd, to help everyone out, we'll move down to our Second Amendment ordinance of public hearing and have it first so that those of you that that's all you're here for, you won't have to stay for the entire meeting. I'd like to let everybody know how we will be handling the public hearing today. Our procedures, the Commissioners will entertain a motion from our board to open the public hearing. Once we open the public hearing, all who wish to speak will have that opportunity to speak. We will limit those to five minutes each. We won't keep anyone, there won't be a total dead, a stop time on the total hearing. Everyone will have an opportunity to speak that wants to speak. We would ask that maybe we use some judgment and not continue to repeat what the last guy said or laid. But you will have, be limited to five minutes each. Once everyone has had an opportunity to speak, there'll be a motion by the Commissioners to close the public hearing. And after the public hearing has been closed, there will be no other opportunities for the public to speak at that point. The Commissioners will then have the opportunity to discuss the proposed ordinance, make any additions or corrections or changes to that ordinance, or even table that ordinance for further research into that. We will have, be able to, the Commissioners will have an opportunity to ask any of the public that has input, if we have a question pertaining to your statement, we do have, we will have that right to ask those questions. Other than that, there won't be any public involvement after the hearing is closed. We do ask you to come to the podium, state your name, and sign the sign-in sheet so that each one of your names are entered into the minutes as speaking at the hearing. So with that in mind, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Also, Lou.
I'm seconding it.
There's been a motion made and seconded that we open the public hearing for the Second Amendment Preservation Act Ordinance 2020 dash, it would be 01.
Correct.
If passed. Is there any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes. I declare this public hearing open at this time. I just ask that you come up to the podium in orderly fashion and show respect for others as well.
Have you got something to sign?
Yes, it's up there on the podium.
Mr. President, could we?
Oh, do you want? Please add, please add to the, your name, add your address as well, the Secretary would like, on the, on the sheet. So whoever wants to be first.
Could we, could we start with Lonny Scott? Because he seems to be serving as spokesperson for this group. And I know that he's been, he's done some work prior to our meeting, so.
If you want to throw anything, you can do hit.
I think if we start with him, it might make things go a little bit easier.
Lonny?
This will be a lot less than five minutes, I guarantee you.
Okay.
I'm here today to ask the Fayette County Commissioners to consider a constitutional assurance resolution. We first started this as a ordinance by direction of the Indiana United 2A, who was overseeing the county, were all 92 counties in the state of Indiana. But we've changed direction due to several reasons. We want to go with a resolution instead of an ordinance because there's enough laws out there, and all we need to do is enforce what we have, the law of land, law of nature. The reason I started this in the first place was because I'm tired of the constant attacks on our freedoms by those who feel they have to for whatever reason. And we decided to change course away from the ordinance because... Because of several reasons. One was, I was reading the paper Saturday, and they had some things in it that kind of struck, struck me differently and made me kind of want to change course. And talking to several people I really respect about things, and we got enough laws as far as guns already, so we don't need more. Like I said just a minute ago, we need to enforce what we have. By you guys doing this, this resolution and signing it, you're stating we stand up for the Second Amendment here in Fayette County. Basically, this will be reaffirming the of protecting, protecting our Constitution and Bill of Rights. I called, contacted a fellow named Guy Relford, he's a Second Amendment attorney over in Carmel, Indiana, and asked him what I, what I needed to do, and he sent me a model of a constitutional assurance, models for me to work it into for the Fayette County process. He sent me a model, we worked it over and made it tailor-made to Fayette County, and he three Commissioners, and I saw Sheriff Laughlin this morning and showed him a copy of it, and we discussed it. Actually, we want, we want to either amend or make this now a resolution. So if you guys would consider that, I'd be greatly appreciative of it. And I'd also like to thank Sheriff Laughlin for his courtesy, respect, and time he's made out of his day for me, several, on several occasions, to talk to me about this. And I'd like to thank you Commissioners for your time as well.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak at this time?
Yes, if I may.
Sign in.
I think that's me. Councilor, Commissioner Naylor, Commissioner Strom, Commissioner Nobby, Counselor, Mrs. Downer. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for allowing me to be here today and speak. It's not something that I really wanted to do. There's other things I'd like to do besides being here. However, this is important enough that I feel like we all need to get heavily involved. I just read this morning where a certain billionaire politician has placed 11 anti-gun lawyers, pro-climate lawyers, in 11 state Attorney General's offices. He is paying them out of his own pocket, so guess how they're going to support him and his wishes. And he is radically anti-gun. He hates the very thought of us having a firearm. It's sad that we have to be here today to, to do this, take up the Commissioners' time and the rest of you folks who are here, but we've lost our way. We're allowing unscrupulous politicians to force stuff down our throat that's unconstitutional. And we're not organized, we're scattered all over the place, and so they're getting by with it. And the general misconception is the statute passed by legislature bearing the appearance of a law then constitutes the law of the land. Whereas the United States Constitution, the United States Constitution is the supreme law of the land, and any statute to be valid must be in agreement with the Constitution. Anything else is null and void. It is impossible for both the Constitution and a law violating it to be valid. One must prevail. And it's written all over the place in the Constitution, other, Bill of Rights, other places, the Constitution is the supreme law of the land. The general rule is an unconstitutional statute, though having the name and form of a law is in reality no law, but is wholly void and ineffective for any purpose, therefore it cannot be enforced. All we're asking is that that happen. And right now, we've got a pretty good legislature, and we've got good people in our local offices. That can change that quick, like it did in the state of Virginia. Bloomberg coughed up $2.5 million. Other anti-gun organizations, anti-Second Amendment organizations coughed up $300,000, $400,000 a piece. Bloomberg handpicked anti-gun legislators. Guess what? The legislature, the governor, and the Attorney General of Virginia are all now anti-Second Amendment. One of the major causes of that is because the people who own firearms and who believe in the Constitution didn't get off their butt and go out and vote. They sat at home because they said, well, you know, it can't happen here. It did happen here. It can happen here. We become complacent, we don't pay attention to what's going on in, in politics, what these people are doing to us. And in order, like Lonny said many times on Facebook, in order to be effective, we've got to be educated. We have to be able to carry on a conversation with somebody who is opposed, give our point of view without becoming a radical nutcase, and convince them that they're wrong if they say that this isn't right. And I have nine changes here from the founders of Supreme Court, judges, and others that verify it is our right to keep and bear arms. There's no question about it. Even if that is upheld, if like in the state of Virginia, they passed out of committee an AR-15 ban. AR-15s or semi-automatic rifles have been around since 1899. Remington patented one with a Vox magazine in 1899. Now they want to ban them. They are not responsible for any percentage of a crime, it's infinitesimal. And it was defeated. Four, even four liberal Democrats came out against, and the reason they did was because of the overwhelming outpouring of citizens and people attending meetings and urging them, hey, you better vote for this or you're going to be on the street next election. And that's what we've got to do here. We've got to pick these politicians according to our desires. And right now, the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and our way of life is what's at stake, and I'm serious. These people are out to destroy us, and at the present rate, it's happening, it's going to be that way. We have a, I'm going to say this, might make somebody mad, we have a socialist communist that is a prime candidate for the Democrat Socialist Party, that runs a very good chance of being their candidate to run in the fall election. In 1953, when I went into the service, did I ever dream that I would see somebody who was a devout socialist communist on any ticket? No, no way, shape, manner, or form. When I read that 53% of young people between the ages of 18 and I think it was 28 or 30 thinks that the socialist form of government is better than capitalism, a cringe, it scares me to death. We've lost our way. So how am I doing on time, Jerry?
You're just about done.
Okay. With that, I will, we all like President Kennedy. No, I can't find it. I will read you this, though. There's a lot of question on militia, and it's important to know what a militia is. And in Miller versus U.S., the Supreme Court, 1939, the case had to do with assault of shotgun. It's not important to what I'm saying here today. However, militia was part of the original suit. The court defined militia as follows. "The militia was composed of civilians primarily, soldiers on occasion. It was upon this force state could rely for in defense and securing of the laws on a force that comprised all males physically capable, females now included, of acting in concert for the common defense, who when called for service were expected to appear bearing arms supplied by themselves of the kind in common use at the time." We are the militia. We are the defenders of the nation. We're not the National Guard. We are the militia. We need to act like it, we need to get involved, we need to read the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, understand what the founders said, read the Federalist Papers, understand who we are, because we've lost sight of who we are. We're important, we're exceptional, we're Americans. What would this world be without us? And we can't let these unscrupulous politicians take away our God-given rights. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Howard Price, and I'd like to make a little statement here. I'm pro-Second Amendment as well, but I do feel strongly that maybe this is the wrong forum to address this. The Commissioners are responsible for the management of the county. But now we have a resolution versus an ordinance in hand, so we need to figure out whether we're going to go with the resolution or the ordinance. As the ordinance is presented, I feel that's an abrogation of the law, and we shouldn't do that. Beyond that, there's been good arguments here and everything, but first let's iron out the procedures that you're going to do and where we're going from that. Otherwise, we're just sitting here talking to ourselves and not accomplishing anything. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple pages here, I was only planning on maybe two and a half minutes, so it's not going to be very long. It's been big print because I'm old. First, I'd like to say what I'm about to read you. You must remember the time, the times that this took place in, where there was no internet, was no telephone, was no telegraph. All news was transmitted by hand and paper or by word of mouth and by horse carriers or walkers getting from one community to the next. Most of the news was reprinted from newspapers on the East Coast. So schools today, I imagine, lack probably from what I was taught about history, about the American, American stuff from the beginning today because of, let's say, technology and their history is probably when I was young, and so things have changed. But I wanted to just review what led up to the Second Amendment to start with. The American Revolutionary War lasted over eight years, from April 19th, 1775 to September 3rd, 1783. But open hostilities actually started during the French and Indian War, which started in 1754. Thomas Jefferson at the time was 11 years old. Numerous restrictions, regulations, and laws were imposed on the colonists by the British over the years related to print and press, public gatherings, increased taxes, and inequality in representation in the courts. All of these contributed to the war, but the last act of the British to gain control of the colonists was their attempt to ban and confiscate firearms and gunpowder. In 1774, British General Gage, now the governor of Massachusetts, banned the import of firearms and powder. During 1774 through 1775, private ownership of firearms and powder were banned, and efforts were started to confiscate firearms. General Gage had also forbidden town meetings from taking place more than once a year. When he dispatched troops to break up a meeting in Salem, some 3,000 armed colonists appeared in response, and the redcoats retreated. The war almost started on September 1st, 1775, when General Gage went to a small, or sent a small detail of about 260 redcoats up the Mystic River and took control of hundreds of barrels of gunpowder in Charleston. By that night, approximately 30,000 colonists had gathered to head to Boston as a rumor that fighting had broken out in the streets there. When it was learned the rumor was false, the colonists turned back. Two weeks later, on September 14th, 1775, General Gage received orders to use any force necessary to stop the buildup of colonial militias. On September 15th, redcoats headed to Lexington and Concord to destroy the Colony Arms Depot at Concord. On September 19th, the fighting and the war began. Four years after the war ended, on September 3rd in 1783, the Constitution was signed on September 17th, 1787. Two years later, on September 25th of 1789, Continental Congress proposed 12 amendments to the Constitution. They required each state to ratify with a three-quarters approval required to become law. It took over two years with 10 of the 12 amendments being ratified. On December 15th, 1791, the last state to ratify, Virginia, did so, and the Bill of Rights, as they're known, became law that same day. Is it possible that the Second Amendment could be overturned or eliminated even though the states, it shall not be, even though it states that it shall not be infringed? And the key word in that is "shall." It doesn't say shouldn't, it doesn't say probably should not, it says shall not be infringed. And I say yes. Considering the 50-some years that it took from the start till we got our Bill of Rights, they had the communications that we have today, where anything that happens, the whole nation knows about it five seconds later. True or false, they know about it. Everything was done then, back and forth, everybody had a cooling period because it took two weeks to get a letter from New York out to the West. The cooling periods have seemed to be gone by now. You see something and you're upset right there, and so you put out a couple tweets or emails, and it spreads rapidly. I urge and pray the Commissioners will support this ordinance or resolution unanimously. And I would ask, after being talked about resolutions and stuff too, that neither be approved today without consulting your attorney, because what I want is the one that's most enforceable in the future.
Thank you, John.
Yes, I live in Bill Centerfield, I live in North Town, and I'm not no politician or nothing like that, I'm just here because it's my right. I feel that I serve my country, and that should be the right, and I have to do to keep and bear my arms. And nobody should have the right to tell me I can't because I'm not a criminal, I don't have no background, I'm no kind, and I've heard a lot of other ones like us too who feel the same way I do. I just wanted to come up and say this because that's what I, I serve my country to fight for my rights, and I don't think nobody has the right to take them rights away from us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Darrell P. I live here in Fayette County. Everybody's talking about, you know, against, it is against the Constitution, but there's a lot of other things in that too. If that gets done, even though it's our constitutional right, think of all the other stuff that goes with that. Think of all of the kids that grow up, honey, they take your guns away, that's gone. They have shooting matches, that's even done with the school. There is so many things that is all tied to that, that I think a lot of people don't think about. They think, well, it's the constitutional right. Yes, it is, but if that happens, it's not only that gone, then what's next? And Jim Wolf's a good friend of mine. When all that goes, so does all your businesses that deals with guns. All that's gone, so that affects the economy. So it's not, it is a big thing with the Constitution, but it's not the only thing that would be affected if that happens. And I don't think that, a lot of your politicians think about that. They think, well, I need to say this to get elected, and nobody sits down and figures it out. It's just an immediate thing, and I, I'm sure that, well, I know that Dale was a gun person. He's had them all his life. I bought my first gun off of Joe Dever. I don't know how many of you know that. $12 for a rifle that was used at the YMCA when they had rifle shoots down there for the kids. 12 bucks. So I've been a gun owner forever, and I'd like to remain that way and not have somebody from some other state, which that seems to be a lot of it, all these people from California, New York, trying to tell all of us in Indiana that we don't know what we want or what we need, and that they are going to do it for us. And I'm dead set against that. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for letting me speak today. I'm not a public speaker, so bear with me. I'm a little nervous here. Is it permissible to ask a question of the people here? I was just wondering, how many people know what the requested resolution says? Is there, I should do that backwards. Is there anyone who does not know what it says? Would it be permissible for me to read it?
Your Friday minutes.
Constitutional Assurance Resolution, Fayette County, Indiana. Whereas the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution states, "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." Whereas Article 1, Section 32 of the Constitution of the State of Indiana states, "The people shall have the right to bear arms for the defense of themselves and the state." Whereas each county commissioner of Fayette County, each county commissioner of Fayette County has sworn an oath of office that includes solemn promise to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Indiana. Whereas the sheriff of Fayette County has sworn an oath of office that includes solemn promise to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Indiana. Whereas the Supreme Court of the United States has held unequivocally that all those who have framed written constitutions contemplate them as forming the paramount law of the nation, and then consequently, the theory of every such government must be that an act of the legislature, repugnant to the Constitution, is void. And the case that is cited is Marbury versus Madison, with the correct numbers after it. Whereas while the constitutions of the United States and the State of Indiana frame a system of government wherein the judicial branch is the arbiter of the constitutionality of any law, the county commissioners of Fayette County and the sheriff of Fayette County hereby declare their commitment to the constitutional rights of the citizens of Fayette County, including the right to bear arms as guaranteed against infringement by the U.S. and Indiana Whereas because this resolution does not seek to regulate firearms, ammunition, or firearms accessories in any way, and in fact simply recognizes that any such regulation that is repugnant to the Constitution is void, this resolution is entirely consistent with Indiana Code 35-47-11 dot 1 dash 1, that sequence or whatever. It is therefore hereby resolved by the Fayette County Commissioners of Fayette County and the sheriff of Fayette County as follows. That, number one, that Fayette County shall be a county in which the constitutional rights of all citizens, including the right to keep and bear arms, are deeply honored and protected against infringement. Number two, that the county commissioners and sheriff of Fayette County hereby join the citizens of this county in opposition to any law or regulation that is repugnant to or infringes upon the rights of all citizens as guaranteed by the constitutions of the United States and the State of Indiana, including the right to keep and bear arms. Number three, that all other courts have jurisdiction to resolve the constitutionality of any law or regulation, the county commissioners and the sheriff of Fayette County declare their intent to withhold any expenditure or use of county resources to enforce any law or regulation based upon a good faith belief that such law or regulation is unconstitutional under the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution or Article 1, Section 32 of the Indiana Constitution. And number four, that the county commissioners and the sheriff of Fayette County hereby renew their solemn vows to support and defend the constitutions of the United States and the State of Indiana, including the right to keep and bear arms as guaranteed therein. Be it resolved then, the members of the Board of Commissioners of Fayette County, being the appropriate executive body, do hereby approve this resolution as the act therein. And then if so approved, then the commissioners and the sheriff of Fayette County would sign it. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
I'm Sheila Catterfield, and I just want to agree with that guy right here that told first, I want my second amendment and my constitutional right.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jessica Irvin. I disagree with everyone else. I feel like the laws are set for criminals, and by taking this right away, that's just an open field for criminals to attack, just like the woman that went to a no-gun zone with her husband, and they had to consent to carry, and they left their guns in the car, and she had to watch her husband get shot and killed. And that was due to a gun law where they were trying to protect, but if you're a criminal, you're not going to obey these laws anyway. So that just takes our safety away.
Anyone else?
Now, I can't read a great deal about the Constitution because I don't have anything with me, and I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know the law. But the common citizen, I think if a person hasn't broken the law, and he wants to keep, he wants to have weapons of his own, I, I think, as long as he's not broken the law, why not? I mean, you know, because I live out in the country, and I don't know if anybody would come out there and met my stuff. But if they do, I'd like to protect my property, you know? That's all I got to say.
If you could leave your name, sir. Leave your name on the paper.
Okay.
And your address, please. We appreciate it.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Anyone else like to speak? Last call. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing portion.
I'll move to close the session in the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded that we close the public hearing. Is there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes. As, I'll remind everyone that the public hearing has closed. There will be discussion by the board. We can pass the ordinance as advertised. We can amend the ordinance, or we can table the motion, the ordinance and look at this resolution. So we can act on any of those today. So all open for any discussion.
While the discussion has gone on, I've read through the Constitutional Assurance Resolution that Lonny Scott brought in, and I think it sounds better than the ordinance that we advertised. It gets more to the point, you know? I like the way that reads. Since we, I guess this would be a question for our attorney. Since we did, we did advertise the wording of the ordinance, correct?
Correct. And the ordinance was taken from another county's essentially ordinance, I believe is, is kind of where the language was imitated from. Your question is, can we move forward? You could, you could reject the ordinance today and move forward with a resolution, which is kind of something we've talked about in the past, and I would agree that it is, that it's more appropriate for this to be a resolution than a, than an actual.
So, so we need to reject the ordinance in order to take this?
Yeah, or the, or the ordinance could just die for lack of a motion rather than rejecting it, so it doesn't look like you're against it. Just let the ordinance die for lack of a motion and then move on to resolution. I have a couple questions about the resolution that I'd need to do a little bit of research. I, I, I always hesitate telling you guys to approve something that's citing case law when I haven't read the case, right? I have, I don't have liberty of being a Second Amendment attorney, so I have not read. Marbury, I, I think I read it in law school quite honestly, but I, but I don't recall it specifically. So I hate that it's got a quote in there from that. I need to make sure that cites it correct and everything before you take it, but I would agree that I would much rather proceed with a resolution than an ordinance. And, and just for people out there, I guess that, that the best way to think of a resolution, to me at least, is to, it's just a very strong intention of what our thoughts are, right? It's, it's our stance, okay? If not, for lack of a better word, it's your stance on a topic, right? And I think it's, it's valuable for a lot of, for a lot of things. You know, the state government, the governor can use it, okay? State legislator will take it into account. I'm sure that's part of the intention is to, is to show uniformity. So, so it does have its values, and it, and it shows a strong stance. But like I said, I would, I know everybody likes to have things done quickly. I, I would like to have the next two weeks to be able to review it and to make sure I don't come across anything that concerns me with it. Because it does cite an Indiana Code section that I, I wish I were good enough to memorize Indiana Code sections. I'm not, obviously. And then, you know, we'll read that case law. I'm pretty familiar with the, the parts of the United States Constitution cited. I mean, that's, that's stuff you learn pretty, pretty quickly, but the rest of the things I would like to review, but, but I would, I do like the idea of moving forward on a resolution as opposed to the ordinance.
I think, I, I think what concerns me about the ordinance more than anything is, an ordinance is local law, and it's local law that's enforced, whether it be by the sheriff or by the Board of Commissioners or the courts. But it's, it's local law, and this ordinance, it, it does concern me about talking about past, present, and future laws that may or may not be on the books. And if we're going against those laws, then that's Fayette County saying, you know, we're going to become a lawless state and, and do what we want. So that, that concerns me about the ordinance, and, and I think that was some of your discussion as well, that come up with the resolution idea instead of the ordinance. I was really concerned about Fayette County saying, well, we're going, we're not going to honor state laws that are already on the books that have been proven constitutional.
I had a good discussion with Sheriff Loffler over there about things, didn't I?
Yeah, and so that does concern me about the ordinance, and, and I do feel more comfortable moving forward with a proposed resolution. However, I do agree with you, Jeff. I'd really like for you to go through it with fine toothed comments before we do vote on it.
Okay. Mr. President, I would move to reject the ordinance and then have our attorney research the resolution.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
There's been a motion made and seconded to reject the ordinance. There's been a motion made and seconded to reject the ordinance as presented to us today and advertised for a public hearing. And ask our attorney to research the proposed resolution and get back with us. Is there any other discussion or questions?
Would it be, I guess this again is a question for our attorney. Would it be advisable, I don't know how the newspaper is going to handle this, but would it be advisable for us to advertise the proposed resolution in the same way we did the ordinance?
I don't think we're required by state law to do that on a resolution. Having said that, if that's your desires, because this is a big topic, I think that would be appropriate.
Well, I'll make sure the local newspaper at least gets a copy of it. It's their decision how they want to proceed with it.
And I don't know that this matters much, but I would let the Board of Commissioners know, obviously a relationship with the council as well. And Council Presi, you've heard from one council member today, Council President Mike Quinta is very much in favor of moving forward on this topic, so.
Any other questions I have?
Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Three ayes. Thank you very much for coming in. We appreciate your input. We appreciate your dedication to the community and the continued protection of our community. We'll work on this resolution and work it through our means and we'll see if we can't come back in two weeks and maybe adopt something.
See you in two weeks.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job.
Yeah, let's take a recess.
Okay. Motion to recess?
I'll move to recess.
He gave me an extra couple of minutes.
I'm taking it. Motion made and seconded that we recess for 15 minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion dismissed. We'll reconvene this meeting of the Fayette County Commissioners. All the department heads and everyone, thank you for your patience. We'll move back into department reports. Jelissa, we have you on the top of the list.
You want to go with her?
I don't care. Can you?
Well, she's free.
Can you?
I told her she'd go first. She's up here today.
Kelly and I are here today to ask for the Commissioner's approval to move forward with a grant application. It's a railroad grant. It's through CSX. They give out up to $5,000 for a variety of things, but we would actually be coming under their community grants that they offer. And I believe what we're going to be going up for is to upgrade radios. And that is something that qualifies for the grant. And there is no match requirement. We always love those kind. So if I could have the Commissioner's approval to move forward with that.
I'll move to.
I'll second the motion.
It's a motion made and seconded, I believe, to move forward with the grant application process with CSX.
Say that five times fast.
No, I'd like you to say it once.
Just trying to lighten the mood.
Is there any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes.
And the only other thing that I wanted to mention.
Jelissa?
Yes, I'm sorry.
One question.
Yes, sir.
After the fact. Deadlines, when would we know anything on this?
This is an open deadline. It begins January 1st. It doesn't end until December 15th. But the sooner that you go in, the more likely you're going to get approved, so.
So the award won't be until 2021, then?
They usually take 90 days to review, but by the time it goes through their board and then they have like a committee that goes through them, so by the time all that takes place, it's going to be about 90 days from the time that we submit.
Oh, you don't have to wait on it to close?
Right.
Oh, okay.
Right, it's like just a ongoing process.
Oh, okay. All right, all right. That's even better, Nace.
Yes.
All right.
And the other thing that I kind of wanted to address is Kelly had approached me with the Whitewater Valley REMC Community Trust Grant. That is a grant that we have several different department heads that apply for this grant. It's something that is awarded quarterly. I had told Kelly that we would go ahead and look into it and pursue it. Most of their grants is between $1,000 to $2,000. But we're going to go ahead and move forward with that. The only issue and concern that I have is we want to make sure that when we go in for this grant, another department head is not applying for it at the same time. It doesn't seem to matter if they go in at a different quarter to ask for the funds, but we don't want to be submitting two or three for Fayette County at the same time.
Okay.
What's the criteria for that? That's the only thing I didn't know.
It's just community. It really is pretty wide open.
Okay.
So could it possibly be something that multiple department heads could get together and create one bigger grant?
No, it has to stay within that price range.
Oh, okay, okay.
What I would like to do is send out an email and just say, you know, this is something we're interested in applying for. If you've applied in the past or you're looking to apply for it in the future, please let me know, so that we're not tripping over each other.
Yeah. So, and once again, there's no match for that grant, correct?
Correct.
Is there a motion to allow to move forward with that?
I don't know how you stake a motion though. Let go of your purse or what?
Well, I'll just keep you informed on that one.
I just wanted to bring that to light too, since we're already here today. That's what we're trying to pursue.
All right, great.
It's been great help to me, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. You guys have a good day.
Thank you.
Want to stay up there for the?
Yeah.
Want to stay up there for the annual report?
Okay, I do have some copies for you guys too, to look over. I'm not going to verbatim this, obviously. There's too much stuff, you know, in there to verbatim. But I just gave you the highlights. This is my first annual report, so you're going to have to, you know, do some criteria with me on it if I haven't got everything right. So basically, 2019 annual report for 911. We still, we dispatched for the Connersville City Police, Fayette County Sheriff's Department, Fayette County EMS, Connersville Fire Station 134, and RSC 21. We have three volunteer departments, Everton, Glenwood, Bentonville. There are some other communications that we have on IMA-1, which IMA-1 is in Indiana statewide. It used to be our point-to-point, okay? But now they've given us all a letter in whatever region we fall in, and we're I. So it's IMA-1. So that gives us the capability to reach out to state police and the surrounding counties as well, Rush, Franklin, Wayne, and Union. Year-end employee roster, I'm here, the director. I also am the IDAX coordinator and a mal shift trainer. We have, we ended the year with four full-time dispatchers. Jenny Sorrell is a trainer, Amanda Helm, third shift supervisor. Lisa Wyatt is the assistant IDAX coordinator to me, and Samantha Caldwell. We have eight part-timers, Jackie Pennington, Jane Sparks, Lacy Blades, Brandy Turner, Hannah Reynolds, Diana Potters, Kalen Crumpton, Carolina Griffin. We have two as-needed people, Mark Gibson, Kevin Perry. Radios, MC 5500 console system. We applied when David Baker was in office. We applied for the 911 federal grant through the State 911 Grant Program to update the current console system. The grant was a 60/40 match, requires county to pay full upfront, full balance upfront. Then they will be reimbursed through state for the match amount. Vendor is Mobilecom. They are a Motorola company. They were the ones that sold the upgrade. The MC 5500 console was installed 2011. P25 upgrade was October 2016. Dispatch has two dispatch stations with four computers, five monitors. Both function with radios and mapping. 911 phone, both stations have live recall. All recordings and phone calls are archived from those positions. Recorder, Equiture is our current vendor for that, 24/7 agreement. Also, through David Baker's time on, he had applied for a grant from the local UAW that we did get, that we received. We got that award granted. That provided 911 with Plantronics wireless headsets for each dispatcher. That was about 20 headsets, as well as battery chargers and batteries. Currently, headsets are only used for radio traffic. The capabilities of the headsets are also have them for phones. So basically, if in the future we wanted to hook 911 or non-admin, or non-emergency phone calls to the headset, it toggles. It'll mute one if you have to do the other. So that's just the future thing we might do. I also, this year, I, end of last year, I guess, first of all, I've incorporated one station in dispatch. It's a non-radio station. This station does have Spillman, which is what we use at the radio consoles. It's a CAD system that helps add calls. And it also has the Indiana IDAX on it that we have to use. The station is currently being used as a training position. However, in an event of emergency, we could use it for additional manpower. This station also has Fayette County School Corporation's camera system on it, meaning that we have access to all of the Fayette County Schools' cameras at their buildings. This is not, this access is a case-by-case basis. We do not monitor those cameras daily. So, that being said. 911 system, our vendor is Indigital. It's an IP-based system. Backup phones are Mivo. They are provided by Indigital. So that means if 911 gets busied out, which is what it's called, busied out, not working, and we have a 911 call that's coming in, whether it be from a neighboring county or local, there is two different phones on two different stations, and it will come in on that phone. And that's where it'll bounce to if it don't bounce to their county. So we have those provided by Indigital. We do still have the text 911. Non-emergency phone vendor is Frontier. Our notification system, Everbridge, and our mapping vendor is still WTH GIS technology. Training and how, training, so in-house training every four months, have an overview of what needs to be corrected and refreshed. Any protocols or new protocols that may have been established. State 911 pays for all certifications required for dispatch. So that's really alleviated our budget good, and we don't have to pay for that, and it's nice to have. And then I think I'm going to end there because everything else is included. There is the budget included and your call volume comparisons that you all can look over. Any questions?
Any questions for Kelly?
There's a lot here to go through, Kelly.
I know. That's why I tried to really race through it a little bit, plus leave it to yourselves to go over what else I did not go over, like call volumes versus last year. I think, like I said, you know, Connersville Police Department had 9,400 and some this year compared, or I'm sorry, 19, and they only had 9,200 and 18. That kind of a comparison that's in there for you to look at. Gives you an overview on all the calls that we took and the text messages.
I would entertain a motion to accept this annual report, MR. Mounds.
I'll also move to accept the 2019 Fayette County 911 Annual Report and enter it into the official record.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded to approve, or accept the annual report for 2019 911 and enter it into the records. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll see you.
And this goes to the state as well, correct?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
So, it's all, well, actually, it's already been, it's already there. I got my annual for the state good and done, so we're good.
All right, great.
Okay?
Good.
I'll see you Thursday. Have a nice day.
All right, thank you. Okay.
I was in shock. I didn't think you said my name. Afternoon. With the crazy weather, but all we've been able to try to keep up with the weather. Had that silly snow we got, the top of the mud that was under some of it. But we, I found out we had two of our big plows that we're going to have to have either replaced. One is bowed in the middle with the cornered back. I don't know when it did that. I don't know. They're both old, old root plows. We got Hinkeys on everything else. And the Hinkey is a stiffer, sturdier pile. And I'm going to call Kaufenberger's down in Cincinnati, get some estimates on them and see what they cost, see if I can find it anywhere else. But I'm not sure, I know of any other place that sells them, but I'll look around.
These are the old plows that don't rotate?
These are the ones that swivel back and forth.
They do.
Yeah, all our plows swivel back and forth. Now, we've got some old ones down there. The guy who's much rather have these because they're easier to clean in intersections out with.
Yeah, they are.
And they are nice. And these are 12-foot plows. Both of them that went down are 12-foot plows.
Does that guy that had the semi we got, does he carry that kind of stuff?
Now you got me confused.
That we got the low.
Oh, you're talking about.
Yeah, does he carry that kind of stuff?
I don't know. I'll have to call him and see. I got his, I got his number will be in here too. But yeah, I'll give him a call.
Maybe there's some use once again.
Eric Robinson, I think is his name, out there at the paving company. They got all that stuff with it. I'll have to, I'll run over and check and see with him. We're planning, we're planning on doing some ditching. Get back, as soon as the weather lets us get back to it. We've got some gravel to haul. We've always got trees to trim, but we'll get the brush cutter back out on it, as long as it don't do something silly on us again. Because who knows? It changes, you don't know from one time to next.
It's waiting to see.
Yeah. We, I interviewed the lone person to put in for mechanic. And he, he seemed like an intelligent young person, and he had the schooling. And he wants to come work there. And he's willing to go for any other schooling, we can push him to. And he's 25 years old. So if it's all right with you gentlemen, I just should go ahead and hire him if I can. Tell him to go ahead and give us two weeks' notice where he's at.
You're satisfied with the interview?
I had Morris sit in there with me interviewing, and Morris asked him a bunch of questions. He's always worked with his grandpa on farm equipment, but he went to school at, I got a list. I got prepared. He went to school at Northwestern, Ohio, on diesel mechanics. He took all the stuff on there, and he says he can do the computers.
One of the top, one of the top mechanic schools in Midwest. Very well-known school.
Yeah. His name is Garrett Downey.
Eric?
Garrett.
Jared.
Jared?
Garrett.
Garrett.
Garrett, yes. And I will give him a call tomorrow and have him, give him his two weeks' notice. He wanted to give him two weeks' notice, and I said, I don't have a problem with that. I, I just can't see anybody just walking away from their job.
So is that a request for a 144?
Yes.
I'll make the 144 for what is it?
Garrett?
Garrett?
Garrett.
I'll second the motion to approve the 144 request for mechanic position at the Highway Department.
The motion made and seconded that we approved the 144 request as presented for the Highway Department. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Okay. And I got, I just thought of something and now I can't remember what it was. That's rough getting old, you know it? I can't think of it, so.
Raise your hand if you think of it later. Wave at me or something. All right.
All right, thank you.
Michael?
Just have one real quick thing. I put the quote for BIS Digital in your boxes. It is a, the court recorder for Circuit Court. This is to replace the existing court recorder that we already have there. The one that we have there now is from BIS Digital. It was installed, I believe, June of 2009, so we've been using the same one for not quite 10 years. And it's showing its age. I upgraded to Windows 10, and it's starting to have problems with the clock and having to fudge with it two to three times a week. So it is working, but we need to get it on the schedule to get it replaced. We did have Superior Courts replaced not quite two years ago. So we're not having a problem with Superior Courts. You know, it's the same company that we're using there and using CPD. And just had the jail recorder for the interview room replaced by the same company. So we're not having any problem with the company, and they're easy to work with. So I did not get any competing quotes because this is for specialized equipment for one, and we're trying to stick to the same company. Both for commonality of software and for the fact that we're already working with them, so.
Michael, do you feel that this quote is a competitive quote?
Yes. It's right in the same price range as what we got for the Superior quote. Actually, right in line, I think Superior quote was $500 or $600 cheaper, but we actually got another clock with this one that we didn't get with Superior, because we already had one. But we've been using the same clock in Circuit for six, seven years. And since that's part of what I'm having problems with, to be safe, I'm going to go ahead and replace that. Because I can't say that that's not part of what we're having problems with up there. I mean, it's one of those pieces of equipment that's on all the time, so it doesn't actually shut off, so I can't say that it's not burning itself out. And then when I got a quote from FTR, which is a competitor company, when I went to replace Superior's recorder two years ago, their quote was $2,000 to $3,000 more expensive than BIS's. So I feel it's comparable or less than what it would be from our competitor.
And you have this in an appropriation line to be able to cover it?
Yeah, I had planned on replacing this this year.
This is one, I thought we were replacing the one over at jail this year. Was that last year?
That was last year.
Okay, all right. I'm behind a couple of months, I'm sorry.
We replaced theirs at the end of the year.
Any other questions for Michael? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to accept the quote from BIS for new recorder equipment. At the sum of $7,673.58. I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded that we approved this quote for the recorder equipment in the Circuit Court?
Yes, for Circuit Court.
For Circuit Court from BIS. Is there any questions, comments? The only thing that I might want us to make sure we add to the minutes, the reason for not having multiple quotes, being this follows suit with our other court and sheriff's department as well, so that it all works, is integrated.
Yeah, it makes it so that when the prosecutor or sheriff or anybody needs to look to load up the information, they just have to load up one piece of software. They don't have to go, okay, which thing do we have to do? Which is what we were running into before? Or when the other attorneys, it's like, okay, which player do we have to do? Is what we were running into. Constantly, they were calling, going, which software do I use? I have problems, so.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, three ayes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate it. How about Bill and Mikey? Do you have anything for us today?
Yeah, I've got, for the countywide bridge inspection, I need y'all to sign the contract so I can get it back to Endot for approval, because they'll do a, Jane, you need to sign it also. They want the auditor and the three commissioners to sign it. Then I got to send it back, and then they'll approve it. And then the final, they'll have to approve the final for that, for the countywide, for the next four years. So I need signatures on that.
Also, I've been corresponding with a design engineer on Bridge 90 up on Waterloo Road. And we're at the point where we don't know whether we want to put the trail. Remember, they originally wanted to put that walking trail on that bridge. And right now, I've got, well, we've got a little breakdown of the costs and stuff of no trail, or you know, the bridge, just doing the piers wide enough so they could do their own, or make the whole bridge wide enough. And then they would just put like a sidewalk and a railing on it. But right now, we don't think they're ever going to be able to do that. So we're kind of leaning towards possibly not doing it. So I'll let you guys, you guys want to go ahead and make a decision on where they're putting on there. This is an email Ben sent me. You might, you know, read it, and then maybe, yeah, that's it. And then maybe talk about in a couple of weeks what you might want to do with that, because his feelings are about like mine. It might be a trail nowhere. Right now, they don't even have access down here to Waterloo Road, even get to it. Sex, you know, sex lines right there are barely on North Side Road. So they can't even get to the road, unless it's to the bridge.
My concern, Bill, is the fact that, which is cheaper to pre-plan for the potential of an extension of the trail or not pre-plan and build a pedestrian crossing at a later day?
On County Farm.
At a later day.
Yeah. And there's so many grants he was talking about that you think they can get for that kind of. for that kind of stuff. Trails are huge, you know, all around. And they can, they could probably get, possibly get a grant to take, you know, pedestrian bridge. I just looked, if we made the bridge, you're talking $230,000 extra just to put it wide enough. And they're still going to have to spend money to put their sidewalk and railing. You know, that's not going to include that. Plus, you know, there's going to be some other lightaway issues, costs. You know, we got to pay 20% of that. You know, we pay 20% of that 54 or that 231.
So, the piers.
Exercise might cheaper.
But that's what.
Well, the idea of the trails is not necessarily as much exercise as it is just green space. I mean, I, I understand the thought process and where they're wanting to go with this. It just concerns me that.
And going across the bridge right now, I mean, you may never get to the county farm, you know. The owner is against letting them put it through there now. I'm sure you've heard.
Oh, yeah, but.
So, I mean, and, you know, they may be years out and the state, you know, they may not want to fund it anyway.
Well, the thing of it is, the northern bypass is years out too.
Yeah.
But we bought a piece of property that, where the bridge would go if, if it went.
Yeah.
I mean, it was foresight. It was planning ahead and that's what we're trying, we were trying to do with this bridge.
Oh, absolutely.
We were trying to plan ahead, whether the future is five years from now or whether it's 25 years from now.
And of course, Ben, he was horrid, you know, so.
And who knows, 20 might be.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's up, you know, it's up to you guys. I mean, you don't have to make a decision there or anything, but, but we still got time.
But if they put the widened piers in.
Then that would, they would have, it would cost them probably that difference, a couple hundred thousand dollars to build it up, to finish it off, you know, the Trail Committee.
Right. And put the pedestrian.
Yeah, part on.
Part on.
Or we can make the bridge wide enough and all they would have would be the cost of the sidewalk and railing.
So, is there, and you made the statement, and that's true, the trails, rails to trails and whatnot is a very big thing with federal and state grants.
Yeah, yeah. He said they've got their own, but the fair have got their own rail, Trail Department. That's how big it's getting.
So, are there possibility of grants to take care of this 231,000?
I don't know about our project, though. The bigger grant would probably maybe go straight across Erie, down to County Farm, put it over the creek down there, the pedestrian bridge, or something like that. They could probably, that would be worth a grant. I don't think we could, well, I don't know, they could apply for it possibly. I don't know how that would work.
Well, you can attach the two together on the same.
Project?
Project.
If they could move a grant that fast.
You mean this?
No, we've got our money.
Well, we don't have our money yet.
Yeah, but, um.
I mean, we're four years out yet.
Construction's 2022.
If everything goes right. Yeah.
Well, yeah, 2022. So. Well, like I said, we pay 20% of the, these costs. What the county would pay of the 54 and the 231, so you're, what, $10,000 for another $46,000 or whatever.
I guess I'd like to have some input from, for my own purposes, from the Trail Committee.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we still got some time.
Where are they?
Ben and I don't want to make the decision ourselves to, or whatever.
Even though, okay, the, the property owners up there involved right now, although they may not be in agreement now, during the lifetime of this new bridge.
True. You're talking 80 years.
Pretty certain that, uh.
Something will happen.
Well, there, there's going to be new owners in real estate up there, most, most likely. Which may completely change the complexion of the attitude toward the whole trail matter, you know. And if that happens and we don't make accommodations for the trail, they're going to say, "Why didn't they have the foresight to do that when they had the opportunity?"
So, yeah. I mean, do you do the minimum? Do the piers, just to let them finish off in the years? Or do you put, make the bridge 10 feet wider and?
Yeah, that's, to me right now, that's kind of the question.
So, correct me, remind me, the width of the bridge was going to be three lanes plus the 10-foot trail. Is that correct?
I'm not sure, the three lanes. I'm not sure. He's not, like I said, he's, except there's, he's not done designing it until, you know, make our decision.
Well, if they have this, what are they going to walk to?
Yeah. Actually, I said, you know, like I said, just walk way to nowhere right, right now. I mean, if they, even the next few years, who knows? Like I said, you don't know. Somebody gets a hold of us, oh, yeah. Or the heirs, or whoever.
Yeah.
Let's do it. You don't know, but, you know, it's kind of a shot in the dark. We may have something that's never used or we may have something next year, four years, you know, two or three years after it's built.
Money just can if you're not going to use it, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's our plunder.
They don't have plans to use it, why do it?
Yeah, but he figures the bridge is going to be about 1.15 right now, nothing, you know, left, left parker trail and piers. I mean, you know, it takes a decision day. I mean, think about it, like I said, we've got time. We're still waiting on the final archaeological reports and then he's got to...
Well, if they're listening, I would really like to have some input from the Trail Committee.
We could have put one of them, they probably crossed one of them. They probably like it better.
I mean, this was the reason for the bridge to accommodate the trail was because the Trail Committee's made out the plan.
It would have been fantastic. You could go right across the bridge, down the, follow the creek, on that side of the creek and on county's property. That was a great plan.
So, I'd love to have some input from them.
Yeah.
Of where it's going.
Yeah, because they, like I said, in that meeting we had with them last, I don't know, October or whenever it was, they weren't sure. They thought, you know, they, they were kind of in the air back then. Now they know more. See, they were wanting to put a loop where they put it around the pavilion and going back to the railroad. And I was told that Reed wouldn't let them put it in front of their property. You know, where, you know, where the new trail is off of, they go off the railroad tracks, they're following the creek down behind the pavilion, coming out next to the prop, property, you know, Flump's property. And then they wanted to go back down in front of Reed and all those other ones and go to, uh, back and hook it in. And they were told no. That's what I was heard. You know, just to make that loop at least.
You, you don't need a decision from us.
No, 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 no. We got time. Ben, we just, like I said, Ben and I didn't want to make it. And I told him, "Well, I'll bring it for the commissioners, let them see what their thoughts are and see what, you know, how we want to move forward."
Thank you.
Okay?
We got a month?
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, we knew that because, hopefully it's a big deal. You guys sign that paper.
I think Dale's got it right there.
Right here. That's not mine, I think that's Jane's. Okay, thank you. Oh, Mark, we dated it. Dated. There's one thing on there too. That's your name.
You know, he's a black man.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Is that all you had today, Bill? Bill, great. Thanks for your patience.
Bad news. Bad news, Bill.
Bad news, Bill. That's your, that's for sure.
Fair, Dale. Okay, washing machine is jailed. It's, uh, ready to go. Nine years old. Their life expectancy is about seven years, but running less than what we run. It runs all the time. We've got a door problem right now. We've been babying this door lock and they don't make this washing machine anymore. So, if we have to have this door lock replaced, it's got to be special ordered and special I know, I said, I look just like that, Dale, when you tell me. And you're looking at $3,813.70 for the door lock. And that's just a door lock. That has nothing to do with the mechanical inside the machine that's wearing out. Okay, to replace the machine, commercial laundry, that's who, commercial laundry, we've been with them for 20 years. The other one that put the original washers in, uh, last time we bought washer and dryer. This time, the dryer's going to be okay. To replace the washer, $9,234.85. That's to replace the washer, the same capacity it's in there. I, I give you all the dimensions and everything on it. It's the exact same as in here.
I got a question. Why couldn't we just go up to like Menards and get those washers? They've got up there to get five or six of them. They'd be under, you know, like, under $1,000.
I think you'd be, you'd be constantly working on those things as much as they run the range. They're not, they're not built for the capacity of these things. I mean, they put in wool blankets and everything in there and it's just, it's heavy load to do it in there. So, and you got to have a commercial washer to withstand all the laundry they put through there. It has to be commercial. You could go up there and get those, but they, they would just work out so fast that, I know they would. Like I said, we've had this one nine years.
You said that, uh, these are seven-year machines?
They're estimated about seven-year machines. He put them in another jail and they lasted nine, but we're at nine. So.
So, it's time to replace it then.
Seven to 10 days on a assembly. If we got to have the door assembly, seven to 10 days. That's just to get it, get it ordered and made. If something was happening to this door, if this, if it goes out and we can't nail it back together, then we're down. But so far, we've been lucky.
I guess I'm, I'm of the opinion, I'm, I'm not in favor of spending $3,800 just for a door repair.
No, and I, that's what I'm saying. I'm not either because you got all this mechanical stuff behind it.
Bearing's probably very good, too.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. The tug bearing, to replace that, it would, it would cost more than, we already have more in than buying a new one.
So, give me a little lesson on the use of this washing machine.
It's dry.
What, what does it, what do, what do we launder at the jail?
Everything at the jail. All jail clothes, all jail bedding, uh, everything at the jail.
Then how come we have what used to be Hassler's delivering stuff over there?
I don't remember ever Hassler, all they deliver.
I see a bill every month.
Floor mats, like floor mats.
There's towels.
Okay, that's probably towels. Probably kitchen stuff.
Then why aren't we laundering our own kitchen stuff?
Don't know. If you want to try that, Ron.
No, I'm, I'm asking.
I know. I, I just don't.
If we're laundering everything, why aren't we laundering everything?
Kitchen's separate from what I do, but I, I mean, they're, if they're ordering towels from there, I know, I don't even know anything about it.
I mean, we could possibly use those monthly fees towards.
Yeah, and that's all I'm saying. I don't know.
The washing machine is, I, I guess.
I don't know what they're doing.
I don't understand why we contract some and we do some in-house.
The only thing I know Hassler's, I know Hassler's take over is, is the floor mats. Same as here and in here actually. But I don't, I don't know anything about the kitchen. I'm not involved in that.
I mean, I'm wondering, and this is done by the inmates, the trustees, or?
The laundry? Yeah, by the trustees.
I guess I'm wondering why we. Our own cleaning towels and whatnot for the whole courthouse system and everything. Why aren't they taking over there and laundering there instead of contracted out?
Yeah, I don't know. Like I said, I don't know what the kitchen does.
And I realize that's maybe peanuts compared to a $9,000 washing machine, but.
Right.
If, if we spend a couple of thousand dollars a year on cleaning, cleaning towels, sending them out.
I don't know what their kitchen would be. I don't know what they would be.
But, I mean, I, I think we do here at the courthouse too. We have towels and whatnot that Hassler trades out.
Cleaning supplies here, treating them.
And I wonder why we don't own our own towels and just taking them over to the jail and...
I would worry about cross-contamination. I mean, I don't know. We, I mean, we, there's, I mean, we got bleach and all that stuff, but still, I, I wouldn't, I'd just shut up. I'll just be quiet.
So, I don't know.
I think I remember when this machine was, current machine was purchased.
I think you probably did, yeah.
I think I remember.
I think you was here.
And I, I about threw a bet at the price.
We, well, we, we bought the washer and dryer both at that time. We bought them together.
I, I think that's correct, yes.
Why would the dryer last longer than the washing machine?
The dryer don't have as many components in it. Don't have as many bearings and stuff. Most of the stuff we handle right here in-house. I mean, like elements and blowbars and stuff like that, we do in-house, so we don't have to, not to mess with that.
Well, I know that machine's seen a lot of use.
Yes, it has. In nine years, it's been through it. And you can tell it. I mean, it's, it's starting to drag.
Yeah.
And we're, we're working on a lot more, trying to keep it going. Because once it goes down, if it goes down for two days, then you're, you're back up. You wouldn't believe it.
Uh, yeah, I know. Well, if, taking into consideration the number of years that the old machine has lasted so far, uh, you average the cost of the original purchase, it hasn't been that bad.
No, I don't think it has.
On a yearly basis, you know.
I don't think it has.
Uh, I can't even remember what we gave for the old one.
I think we were really close. It was a $9,000 range. I think we, I think we was at 10 on just the washer. I'll have to look at it, but I think we was. But I think we were like nine, eight or nine on the dryer. So, let's say that was combined. We bought them both together. We was right at 20, I think.
Well, now, having to replace both of them at the same time takes some of the sting out of it.
Yeah. And I think, I hope that we can keep the dryer going. I mean, I don't see a problem with that. It's working good, so. And I don't see anything that would go down and we couldn't fix, not have to replace it. I mean, we may have to order some parts, but we wouldn't have to replace it.
We only have one quote here, gentlemen.
Yep. And the reason being, we, I can't make quotes from other places. But it, nobody wants to do. I mean, a lot of people don't deal with it. And not only that, I've been with these people for 20 years. The service is outstanding. And he's not, I mean, he's, he's not backstabbing me, I know. And, uh.
So, this guy sold us the current?
So, is the current. And I've been with him, like I said, I've been here 20 years and I've dealt with him for 20 years. And he just, he's a good upstanding guy and his service is excellent. If I need him, I call him. If he can't fix it, he'll walk me through it on the phone.
We got money on our budget today.
I'm sorry.
Have we got money on our budget?
Well, he'll have to come, come to jail or somewhere. I don't have it in my budget, I don't, so. I don't know what they have.
I can't see paying that kind of money for a curl on the door. We might as well go ahead and get a whole wooden.
Yeah, I, I agree, Mark.
That's one-third of the cost.
Right. You pay that much for a door lock.
And not guaranteed that it's going to work.
And then, and then, like the brach go out of the tub, you're, you're done. I mean, and it could happen.
Well, if it can happen anywhere, it'll happen here.
Along with something else?
Yeah.
I hope I don't have to break it to you.
You're just full of good news.
Yeah, I told my wife so.
I would say this would have to come from either Q cap or...
I haven't looked at Q jail. What condition is it?
It's not very healthy.
It's in the red.
Yeah, okay.
Already, and it's February.
Like I say, we're spending more than we're bringing in.
Hence my argument towards asking the council to reevaluate Q jail and what we do with it.
Get that on your list of things to do in August. So.
It would either have to come from courthouse operating or, or Q cap under the remodeling. Probably line item that we keep there for renovations, upgrades.
Yeah, well, I think either one place or the other, uh, certainly be.
I don't know if there's a specific line item in courthouse operating that we could already use without going to the council.
There isn't, we manage it.
As you said, there's remodeling in Q cap. There's also some remodeling budgeted in. The courthouse operating, no, there's not anything in there, I'm sorry.
So we'd have to go to the council first?
There's an equipment line.
But nothing in it?
Fifteen thousand budgeted in courthouse operating.
So that, that's possible.
I don't know, we, we find some way to pay for it, one way or the other, I, I just hope. I'm, I'm glad Bill's ahead of this, but i- if the machine goes down completely, we're, and we gotta start shipping laundry out immediately.
Exactly.
And that's gonna get expensive.
Very expensive, sure.
Yeah. Or do we, i- if that happened, where would we go?
You'd have to, you'd have to go to Hasslers, everyone wants to get the machine big enough to handle.
And I don't think we can contract with Hasslers to do all that laundry for thirteen hundred dollars a year.
No, no.
That's what this washing machine's gonna cost us.
Right, yeah.
I don't think we want bigger than what they do with that.
I mean, we spend that now with our measly towels that we have done already. So. I, I, I really don't, I don't think we need to, can afford to delay on this, but. Whatever the pleasure of the board is. I'd entertain a motion to do something.
You'll go ahead and buy a new machine now?
I think we might as well, because the time you put that door on, it, it turned right around, him bearing would go down, it's huge.
The way our luck goes.
Yeah.
Or the door will fall off.
Better move to the best and go to the only, and then figure out before it's gonna take the weight.
Okay, I'll, I'll move to, uh, go ahead and authorize Bill to, uh, enter into an agreement to purchase this new machine from Commercial Laundry Equipment Incorporated in Camby, Indiana, for a total of nine thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-five cents.
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded, that we go ahead and authorize Bill to enter into an agreement with CLE for a commercial, size washing machine at the price of ninety-two hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-five cents. Any questions or comments? Call in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you, guys, I'll get it ordered.
Tell we want a top-notch machine too.
It'll be exactly what we got, we're close to what we got, can't get exactly what we got, because they can't, they don't make it.
Where does that at?
I'm sorry?
Where's Camby, Indiana at?
Camden?
Camby, Camden.
I thought Indianapolis.
Oh, yeah? I've never heard, ever heard of it. Must be a small town.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you, Bill.
Probably the only business there, you know.
Heather, do you have something for us today?
So you all should have received a little postcard in your mailboxes to inviting you to our annual meeting, March tenth. That's a requirement from Purdue University that extension educators hold a yearly annual, a yearly meeting. And you are all invited, as well as the county council and some other members of our community. So at that time, we'll be sharing what we have accomplished in the last five to six months since we've been hired, and then our goals for the next year. So it'll be a short hour and a half or so, there'll be refreshments provided, so come on over, it always entices people. But I wanted to personally give you guys an invite and make sure you knew you're welcome, and we would love to have you there. And then just a couple of quick programs that we're working on, I wanted to just tell you about two of the many. Rhonda and Stephanie are working on a new family orientation for four H, new four H members. So we're pretty excited about that, and junior leaders are on board. I was at the junior leader meeting last night, and the kids are super excited about a new plan to get new members oriented with four H, and they also want to do a mentorship program with new members. So I was really excited, that was their idea that they came up with, so I'm really excited about that. Rhonda's thrilled, Rhonda's the leader of the junior leaders, so she's excited about that. The other thing is that Fayette County is hosting, um, a beginning farmer series workshop that Extension provides, and we are advertising in a six-county radius around us. That is, um, the program is to help young farmers that want to start, help them begin the planning process, write some things down, help them budget, that sort of thing. But it's also for members who are in our community who are already doing production, but maybe want to diversify. Helps them kind of create a path for themselves. So I'm very excited to be able to get some ag programs back in Fayette County. I'm very excited to be hosting that. The six counties we're advertising is Wayne, of course Fayette, Franklin Rush, and I think that's only five, I said six. So anyways, we're, we're very excited about being able to bring some more programs back to Fayette County, so just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
That's all I got, thanks, guys.
I saw Kathy back there. Kathy, do you have anything for council?
Okay.
Jeff, do you have anything to add to what we've talked about today already, or?
No, I don't think so.
No.
All right. I don't think there's anybody else out there. Hey, did you ever remember what you wanted to?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
I was gonna tell you that I will have for the next meeting, I'll have in what we're gonna chip seal and pave and you have all the different areas, and have it split up and the cost of it and all that.
Okay, great.
And on the, the box down there, Bill and I are still working on that, 'cause for me to bring a track hole down and do that, it's about twelve thousand dollars. Think of one that'll reach down into that hole, so we're trying to figure out another way to go about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll let you know how we come up with it.
You're talking about down at Veterans?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right.
'Cause both them boxes be cleaned out around the end though.
Okay, all right. We'll move on to mail, I have a letter here that I'd like to read to us. It's dated the fourth of February of this year. Dear Commissioners, thank you for responding to my letter. I truly appreciate the fact that you put the sign up immediately. Thanks to you, I can now tell my friends where they can go to kayak. God bless, sincerely, Samantha Scholl. That was the elementary student, the sixth grade elementary student that requested the sign for Ray, or Mahan Park. Our highway was gracious enough to get that sign put up, and I thought it was very appropriate to read her, she left.
Yeah.
So, um, it's, it's great to see people participating with the county government.
Especially that young.
Especially that young. We'll move on to old business. We've already had our ordinance hearing. Jeff, do you want to speak on a, the proposed letter that, uh, really it's asking for information?
Right, it, it just, I guess what I would need is the board to, to make a motion that we send, um, or at least direction from the board that we send Next Era a letter essentially stating that, um, what's their, what's their thoughts on the current status of any contract with the county? I don't think we need to go into it very deep, I think we just make a simple, what, you know, a simple statement to them, asking what they believe their status is and any, um.
And intent.
And their intent, and any documents to back up their, their thoughts on, on what their actual agreement is with the county, if there is one.
You, you just want our direction?
For me to prepare that and send that out.
Make the inquiry correct and get a response from them.
Yep.
Okay. Well, I'll move to direct the county attorney to draft and send a letter of communication to Next Era Energy, and inquire as to their, their views on the status of current, any current and past, um, agreements between them and the county.
I'll second the motion. Motion made and seconded. We ask the attorney to address a letter to Next Era in reference to the current status of, and, and their plans, pertaining to the contracts that they have, um, had with the county. And that wind project, any other questions or comments?
Might add that, this, I know I certainly have had no communication whatsoever from Next Era Energy, and I don't know if anyone else here has either, but I, I get asked about this periodically. And I haven't heard anything from those people since the last time one of the representatives was here to speak. They spoke to council, and that's been about three years ago or more. So I have no idea of what, what is going on with them.
Anything else? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Three ayes. Thank you, Jeff, if you can get that taken care of.
Yes.
Hopefully we hear something back from them pretty quickly, so that we know what direction to move in. Also, um, we have here an amended interlocal agreement, um, since the, um, the grant writer position has changed, um, over to city. She is now part-time instead of a full-time. The city has sent over an adjusted interlocal agreement to, um, represent those dollar needs. I'm assuming that was the only changes that were made. Jane, did you compare it?
The other change in the past, we have given four thousand dollars to EDG to cover any supplies that the grant writer has used, and EDG requested that we no longer go through them, that we give those monies to the city. So there, that's also incorporated in there, the additional four thousand dollar cost.
Okay.
This, this one here, so this fourteen thousand. That's, that category's big, four thousand, office supplies. Was the dollar amount the only change in these?
The salary dollar amount.
Is the only change.
Okay.
We've always had down to four thousand, out of edit.
Yes, it's always come out of edit, it just went to EDG in the past, and now to be going to the city instead of EDG.
Okay, this one is calling for fourteen thousand dollars.
The trip paid for it.
And the, the old agreement was, do you recall?
More than fourteen?
How much was it?
Just trying to think.
Hey, hang on, I can find it for you.
Seems like it's twenty-four or whatever.
So, Joe Lisa is not.
She's part-time.
She's not gonna work the full time.
Four days a week.
Okay.
Yeah, you can just pull that out of your list and look it up.
Well, I don't have that note with me.
He's not wearing that shirt today, Mark.
I know he's got it somewhere.
I can't access it from this computer, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And this one.
I wanna say it was, it was like eighteen-something, like eighteen pi.
That sounds ballparky.
Yeah, now that you mention that, yeah, it was eighteen-something, down to fourteen, so. Whenever we ever done an agreement request that lowered things.
That doesn't happen very often. These are duplicates, okay, one for us and one for them.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
The board of works has signed it.
Yeah.
Already approved it and signed it. I believe they probably did that yesterday, I'm guessing. So I'm, I'm gonna obtain a motion to approve the interlocal agreement.
Assume.
Motion made.
I'll, I'll second the motion to approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Connersville, Indiana, and Fayette County on the grant writer's part-time position.
Motion made and seconded, uh, that we approve the interlocal agreement with, with the city of Connersville. Is there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes. Any new business need to come? Any other new business? I laid in front of you a report, the first, um, report, uh, from the Indiana State Department of Health. These reports we'll be getting, I'm not sure whether it's a monthly report or a quarterly report, but, um, this one ended the thirty-first in reference to our needle exchange program. That information I'll, I'll give, make sure Jane has a copy of it so that it can be entered into the minutes. It is up and running. Started, the, the date range of this report is one-twenty-two to, um, one-thirty. So a few days into January, um, they did get, I think they had two or maybe three days in January that they were open, with pretty good success, I think, with it. And, um, as far as I know, I'll, I will continue receiving these reports and I'll make sure that I pass them on to the two of you.
So they, we're, we're gonna get these on a regular basis now?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, that's something we didn't.
We didn't get before.
Right.
And the state has helped out, they have a new software program, um, database that, uh, that is creating these reports, so that, that does help too, so. And as you can see from the report, they handed out less syringes in that time period than they received back. And that's what we're after, to get them off the streets.
Yeah, and this, this is only for a few days, so.
Yes.
January.
Yeah.
The next report should be more reflective of what's actually going on.
Yes, it should be, a better report. So, just wanted to make you aware of it, and did I make a copy of, is this for you?
Yes.
Okay. And ask Jane to enter that into the minutes. Any other new business? Any other new business?
Let me see my notes. Nope.
Any, we don't have any Patriots concerns that was on, on our agenda, but if there's anyone that needs to speak?
No.
All right. We'll move on to approval of claims and payroll.
I'll move to approve claims and payroll.
Second the motion on claims and payroll.
Motion made and seconded to approve the claims and payroll as presented. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes. I will pass things down for signatures before we adjourn.
Mr. President, I did forget something that we...
We've already passed.
We probably should have discussed, and that was the mowing contract for cemeteries.
That was new business, too, Dale.
Well, we didn't have anything that promised you.
Yeah, we better discuss that. Even though the day has ran long. You and Mark spent a great deal of time with the cemetery commission, and our need to maybe clarify or make our mowing contract more accessible for vendors, and I think you've come up with some solutions for changes to the advertisements, haven't you?
What we did, Mark and I spent two and a half hours with them, we went through the list of cemeteries with them, and as well as the mowing requirements, and it was their wishes, and I think both of us were in agreement. They, they wanted to reduce the number of cemeteries mowed from 20 or 21 down to 15, and we changed some, some language in the requirements themselves as to the height of the grass, and...
Lawn more use.
Lawn more use, and that sort of thing, and we, I think they got everything fixed pretty much the way they wanted.
For now.
Everything's subject to change, but the, the new contract is supposed to take effect in April 1st, so we need to advertise that as soon as possible, so that we can get some bids in and be ready to go on April 1st with mowing of the cemeteries.
Is there a motion to advertise the change, the proposal as changed? With the changes made?
I'll advertise for some cemeteries.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded that we do advertise with the changes made. Any questions or comments? I greatly appreciate the time you fellows have put into that. I know there's been quite a bit of discussion over it and concerns. One of my main concerns are that we are practically spending the whole budget on mowing, and I'd really like, and I've shared it with one of the board members, I'd really like for our direction to change somewhat to true preservation of our pioneer cemeteries, and that's restoring monuments, and, and the only way we can do that is to do less mowing and more preservation of stones. And I think this is a direction in that, in the right direction for that, and it will hopefully free up a few more dollars to do a few more monument restorations. And I applaud you for, the two of you, for getting that worked out with them.
Well, that was certainly part of the discussion, and I, they, the cemetery commission certainly does want to do more restore, restoration. You know, like everything else, it's all a matter of how much money do you have to spend, so, I guess we'll just have to wait and see how the mowing bids...
Come in.
Come in. But I'll, I'll try to get you a copy of the amended version of the proposed contract today.
Okay, all right, I appreciate that. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Three ayes. Anything else? Now check your note.
Nope.
I'll second.
Motion made to, for adjournment and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes. Meeting adjourned.